I'll call the city council meeting to order. We're in quorum, but we're missing Mr. Klein. Everybody know if he's coming?
And then also Jeff.
All right. I was chatting with our guests here. Everybody knows why we're here. This is joint meeting of the council and the P and Z. To an overview of our process coming up with the, or that we're into with the comprehensive plan and the parks and master plan. Do you want any preliminary comments from P and Z? City?
Mayor, can we have P and Z? Meeting also?
Thank you. We want to be legal. It's okay. Thank you, Vic. Anna, do you want to start us off?
Sure. Well, thank you all for joining us. This like this has been a long time coming since we did the RFP and selected our, our consultants and then our advisory committee. And we've had a few meetings. But this is the first chance we've had for planning and zoning and city council to kind of sit down, look back a little bit where we come from, what we're doing well, what we need to work on, and kind of have a joint vision for our new comprehensive plan. So this is that meeting to get those ideas out and on paper. We do have some more focus group meetings and tomorrow evening have our first public open house. And that'll be a come and go meeting from four to seven over at the old sanctuary at Pioneer Museum. So hope everyone can join and bring your friends and neighbors as well. Mayor, do you mind if we go around and do introductions? And tell how long, what, what for their mission and how long you've been serving?
Let's go clockwise. That's good luck.
I'm Chelsea Erby. I would have associates. We're the consultant leading this process. And I'm the planning team leader in our Austin office and then also the project manager for this process.
My name's Jordan Maddox. I'm also in the Austin office of HAF, director of planning there. Happy to be with you today. Decided to be part of this project.
I'm Natalie Booth. It's Natalie like math leech, but not. I'm a senior planner with HAF and I'm the deputy project manager for this project.
Anna Hudson, interim director of development services. And this is my sixth year at the city. Sharon Joseph, city council.
Oh, Tom Mosselman, P and Z.
Cindy Stradens, P and Z.
Daryl Whitworth, P and Z.
Holly Rickert, P and Z.
Tim Dooley, P and Z.
Jeff Lawrence, P and Z.
Clinton Bailey, city manager, about a decade on staff.
Bobby Watson, city council.
Emily Kurtzner, city council.
Jimmy Dero, P and Z, and about 20 years.
You were here last time.
Right.
Daryl Hoover, mayor. Thank you all for coming. So just for my benefit, we're missing Steve Thomas and Tony. Is that it?
Did he answer? You don't even have to answer. He was a part of the process last time. I'm curious.
This is on page seventeen.
And unfortunately, there's, there's at least three of them.
Is that the update?
She has who's on before.
I'm six.
I wasn't born then.
Are you prepared to go, Chelsea?
I am. Okay. Well, thank you all for being here. You have lots of screens, so everyone should be able to see the presentation. We have our quick, it keeps our time. But we hope we'll do a quick presentation, but we're really going to use data, ask all our questions and kick off the initial visioning. So don't hold back. We're not going to go around and make each one of y'all talk, but when we're asking questions, hopefully it sparks dialogue and you can each, each say something. And so this, this is the fun part where we get to, sit around and not think about the day to day and think about the, the big picture. I don't know if y'all had joint meetings. Have y'all had joint meetings with these two bodies before? Oh my God. But still, it probably doesn't happen a lot. So I'm glad we get to be a part of this process. So we're going to do a quick introduction to the project. I gave these slides to council back in, I think it was September when we were awarded the contract, early October. So council, you've heard some of these, but it's a good refresher. But P and Z, if you weren't at that meeting, these will be good slides to learn about our project. And then we're going to tell you what we've been doing since then, since we got started with the project. And then we're going to get into just a quick, three and four is really quick going over some of your recent planning efforts. Want to ask you a few questions about that to stir up some discussion. And then really, we're going to spend a lot of time on five. And so as y'all are talking out loud on number five, I'll be writing stuff on the board and we'll be capturing your thoughts. And then we'll talk about what's next.
So is five in and give you our wishes?
Yes, no, and no wrong answers. Pretty big. So we did introduce ourselves a little bit, but this is the half team that is working on your project. Like I said, I'm the project manager, certified planner, and have been doing this about 10 years, mostly in the private side, working for cities all across Texas. But I did spend a few years in the city of Georgetown as our senior planner and interim historic planner. So familiar with Texas downtowns and all that that brings. And Jordan and Natalie introduced themselves, but they're back at the office, which you actually might have seen him around here. And he'll be here tomorrow at our open house. It's Julian Salas for us. He's our planner. And he does all our maps. It'll be our primary document support. And then we're also, we also have a sub consultant and that's Travis James. He's with TXP. He's doing that economic portion for us. So he, he's our reality. He keeps us rooted in what we can do and what the market needs and what the, he has a lot of real estate data, market data. So he'll be helping us calibrate our future land use map to be more in tune with what's going on. And then he also is going to help create a toolbox with different things that you often do as far as, whether it's financing mechanisms, things downtown, economic incentives. So he's going to work on things like that. So you'll see him at future meetings once we get to the recommendation portion of the process. And then your staff has already introduced themselves, but these are the main people we're working with and they've been great so far. So just want to say that y'all, I'm sure you know, but you have a great staff. And so they're, they help make this project awesome. So what is a comprehensive plan? It sounds like actually, did you say six of y'all were here? Is that what you came up with? Six of y'all were here at the last plan? Awesome. Yes. A lot of times when we meet with, with councils, it's like completely changed over and everyone's like, we weren't involved in the last one. So it's really cool that some of y'all were here. And so my bridge to plan is a, is a guide, a policy document. It's not, it's not zoning. Yeah, underlining that there. So it's not something that is completely set in stone. That's a legal document. It is a culmination of all your vision ideas and where and how you want projects to be in the future. So it's a tool. So your staff will use it daily. We'll use it daily because you're already using your current one. But we hope this, this one can be up to date even more so that you can really make better decisions for your land use. So P and Z will use it with zoning cases and other land use applications. And then council will use it when they're analyzing those same cases. Staff will use it when they're talking with developers. And ultimately it's developed with community input, which starts here because we're, y'all are all representative of the community. We're either elected or appointed. And things like tomorrow night where we're going to have open house, we've been meeting with focus groups. We're taking all that data and information and we'll use that to help craft our recommendations. So the scope of this plan, I know you're, you had an O six plan, then you had an update that was a little more design focused, talked about gateways and some different elements. This one is going to kind of go back and update those core elements. You can see, getting a good handle on existing conditions. What's the population like today? What's changed since, since the old plan? Coming up with a new set of vision and goals, updating the future land use map, which is that important component that you're using day to day on your development applications. I mentioned a little bit of the economic development. And then to tie with the future land use, we'll look at infrastructure and transportation element as well. Because those, you know, the land use affects transportation and vice versa. So we want to make sure that where we're planning certain types of growth, there's enough infrastructure to support that. Or based on transportation, infrastructure planning, we might find that we can't support certain types of growth there because maybe there's not capability to get, you know, whether it's water or wastewater there. We'll also look a little about housing, more so high level policy. This isn't a housing study. So it's not going to be a fix all for a lot of the housing issues. We can't unfortunately, can't drive down housing, the prices of housing with a comp plan. But we can look at strategies for how do we preserve existing areas? What are policy mechanisms that we put in place when there's new developments to make sure that they fit the character? So we'll hit it at a higher level. And then it all ends with implementation. So that staff can go and do things. Council, you can tell, tell the staff, you know, your priorities on the implementation. And then one thing that I think is great that we were able to get incorporated into this is the code assessment. So after a comp plan, there are going to be things that are, you know, that are staff time that need to get done or programs or partnerships. But a lot of the policies or a lot of the recommendations come into play by your code, you know, regulatory mechanisms. And so we are going to, it's not at the very end. We'll start it kind of toward the middle after we, you know, see, see where this plan is taking us. We're going to start to assess your current code. And the deliverable is a technical memo to staff and council that says, here's where the code is doing good. Here's where it's a little deficient, maybe based on industry standards. And then the third is here's where updates need to happen to implement your comp plan. So that whether it's staff or a consultant can update those code pieces so that you can influence your comp plan. And so it doesn't mean that the code needs a full overhaul. It doesn't mean that needs a full rewrite. It might just be that certain portions of it need rewritten. So that, that's good instant implementation almost. So it gives, gives staff something to work with. At the same time, we're doing a parks plan. So parks plan is exactly how it sounds. It's looking at your holistic park system, looking at current conditions, future needs, analyzing based on the population and the growth. Do we need more parks? Do we need to just program these parks differently? Where could potential pedestrian and trail amenities be? And then it also looks at operations and maintenance for your staff. So how can they efficiently and fiscally responsible maintain the parks that they have? And so we have a former parks director on staff and so he's going to help us with that O and M portion and work with your, your park staff to do that. So the scope for the parks plan is pretty, pretty self-explanatory. We'll, we'll look through the level of service figuring out are the current parks adequately serving the population that are there? If it's supposed to be, you know, is this supposed to be a regional park, community park, neighborhood park? We'll look at the recreational programming as well. So not just the physical park plan, but the amount of programs being offered. And if that is on pace with, with growth, and then that will end in the assessment plan and action plan. And so these two plans are separate planning documents. But the cool thing about doing them together is the, all the public engagement is wrapped into one. So we're not having part specific engagement and comp plan engagement. So we're talking today, we're talking about comp and park. And we have the public meeting on Wednesday. Tomorrow, we're talking about comprehensive plans and the park plans because a lot of it goes hand in hand. And so planning is important. I mean, it allows, it allows you all and the public to, to control its destiny. So no matter what a city wants to be, there has to be a plan to get there. If there's no plan to get there, then it's just at the whim of whoever's coming in or making decisions at the time. But it allows for this, this orderly growth. You can set the stage here as elected appointed officials. And then some of you sound like will stay on for a while. And so you've, you've seen the, the plans evolve. Some of you may roll off. But that plan is still there for the future city council members, P and Z members, future staff to help implement. And so ultimately it prepares us for action. And so I like this kind of umbrella picture. When I was talking about the different plans, your comp plan acts as the umbrella. So that's the main plan, setting the vision, the policy. And then you can see in red, the sub area plan. That's where the, the parks plan falls in. So while it's still looking comprehensively at a park system, it is one tool in implementing the comp plan. And so you have other plans. You have transportation plans. There's water, wastewater master plans. I'm sure emergency management police, they have, you know, strategic plans and department plans. So that's, that's one way the comprehensive plan is implemented. It's ultimately implemented a lot on a day to day through zoning and subdivision. So that's your developments coming in. And then through operations. So all the things that your staff is doing through, through and council, you're doing through budgeting and, and big capital improvement projects and those day to day operations. Because if you're, so you're kind of thinking, how do, how do we use this? It's used, it's used on the day to day. And then it's also used as you take some of those broader topics like park, transportation, and make plans to drill them down even further. Schedule, we are, I still consider us in the early part because we started in the fall and holidays slow us all down. We're all gone. I was, I was out on attorney leave when this project started. So when I presented to you the council, I was a little bit bigger. It's very pregnant. And so we started in the fall, but my team did a lot. They, the staff, we did a first committee meeting, came out to, yeah, it was like a chamber, chamber mixer. Just, yeah, yeah, yeah. So started to do the events. We have an online survey that's live right now. Did some focus groups. And so we're kind of in that early 2023 part. Today, we're, you know, obviously having this joint meeting and this afternoon is our second committee meeting with our advisory committee. And then tomorrow is our open house. And so we'll, we'll keep moving along. You can see more, more open houses, plenty of opportunity for input, lots of committee meetings and through all, all that is, is brainstorming and plan, plan drafting. And we bring iterations of that plan back to the committee who then helps guide us and make sure that we're on track. But as far as engagement, this is the scope of what we are doing. We have three events stoked. And when we say community event, that's us coming to an event that's already happening. So we're not creating a new event just for this process. We're going and engaging with the public. That's something that's already on the books. The second bullet is where we do an open house specific for the project. So we have three of those. We have three online surveys plus just general social media pushes. Six advisory committee meetings, four meetings with you all, and 10 focus groups, which we've taken care of a lot of those. We like to do those early on so that we can fact find. And Anna will tell us in a little bit more about what they've, what they heard so far. But just want to end before I turn over to Natalie, but what are, what are our roles? And I'd be like, what the heck am I doing here? Ultimately, you know, your role, what you do in your specific position. But how it ties into the comp plan is you all, as the elected and appointed officials, you are guiding the strategy of this. So you're establishing that direction. You're giving us input, support. You're, we ask that you're a champion of the plan, talking about it with different constituents, different groups that come and talk with you. And you're working with the community. So we'll talk a lot about ideas today. When we meet again, we'll talk with more, more strategy. You'll, you'll see more maps, you know, help us vet, help us vet those. Talk about it outside of this, with your community members outside of this meeting and then, you know, and bring ideas back. So we really want y'all to help champion this plan. And you're here to ultimately tell us when we're on or off base. And then council, your ultimate goal is to adopt the plan so that it can become, become actionable. The committee, they are our official sounding board. So you all helped put them together. The committee, they are our official sounding board. So you all helped put them together. And so we'll work with them at more of a technical level, go through pieces of the plan, identify issues, go through strategies. And so they'll be looking at that final document. You'll see the doc have time to work with the draft as well. But we'll kind of roll up our sleeve a little more with them. As a consultant, we're here to facilitate, provide that unbiased perspective. Like I said, we do this all over Texas and even a little bit outside of Texas. So just adding to your toolbox, you know, saying, well, you know, we've worked in the city that's had this similar situation. So let's, let's try this or let's look at this. So we're just here to be an extension of your staff. Because they are busy with day to day things. And so we're here to keep it, keep this process moving and provide you with an action plan. And then staff is here to assist us. And that second bullet is super important, provide insight because we can be the best consultants ever, but the staff knows Fredericksburg the best. So they're giving us these good nuggets of information that helps us, helps us when we're making recommendations. And it makes it super personal to Fredericksburg. And so they're a huge asset to our team. And then again, there's just another layer that will work with us to vet the actual plan document. And so important roles, very exciting. And so again, I just, I, I just want to say that for y'all that went through it before, you kind of know the process and what to expect, but this doesn't happen that often. So yes, we'll have a document that you'll use every day or every day, every week or every month at your meetings. Staff will use it every day, hopefully. But just the fact that we get to, you know, kind of pause down and do this process this year is really fun. So thank you for taking the time out of your, out of your busy days to to meet during the day and don't hold back. So like you said, when it gets to the visioning, no, no wrong ideas. Think big. We want to think as big as we can. And then we'll work as the consultant with staff, the committee, then take those big ideas and try to make them actionable. So Natalie, I'll turn over to you to go over kind of a public engagement update.
So as we said, we tipped this off in the fall and we've heard a couple of things so far. All of it has been pretty consistent. So we've done eight of our 10 focus groups. We've had the survey open for a month or two now. We've met with city staff. We've had one committee meeting already. This data is pulled directly from the survey, but everything so far has really kind of aligned. And the main thing we've heard, the top priority so far that's come out and nearly everything we've engaged with so far is housing. The increasing cost of housing in Fredericksburg. That's been sort of the main takeaway. It was listed so far. The survey is still up. These numbers are changing. This is as of last month. So far, the most critical issue, forty, what is that, forty six percent of survey respondents are saying that it's the increased cost of housing. People are also saying they love the heritage and the community and the culture of Fredericksburg. They love the small town feeling. People are listing schools and employment as being super important. Regarding parks, we've heard sort of a similar thing. People are mentioning soccer fields as an amenity that they're really interested in. We've heard a lot about the soccer fields here. Overall, it seems people are dissatisfied with their parks and trails as of date, but people are very satisfied with other aspects of the city, street maintenance and repairs, sidewalk maintenance and repair. Overall, people seem really interested in sort of quality of life improvements within Fredericksburg. Looking at new parks, looking at somehow addressing affordable housing. And we have two more focus group meetings tomorrow, one of which is focused on neighborhoods and the other of which is focused on nonprofits and ministerial works.
So did you, did you say that the, the surveys indicated that most people were dissatisfied with the park system?
So if you see that bar chart on the top left, the red is very dissatisfied and and dissatisfied. So that's indicating that of the people who have responded to the survey so far, they're indicating that they would like parks.
Just to carry on, so do you use the online survey, giving any preference to residents versus county residents?
We do have a question that sort of asks where you live, if you're in town or out of town. And if you're in town, we broke Fredericksburg into four sort of quarters and which part, which of those quarters do you live in?
So when this closes, we'll be able to report back solid data. We can filter out. You could ask us, show the results with just residents. And then like you said, you can even see it by quadrant. So.
Somebody's sitting in Florida. Most people are saying, the last time I checked, most people are saying that they live within Gillespie County, within near Fredericksburg. I'm not sure exactly. We got, I think, one that they live nowhere near Fredericksburg.
How many responses have y'all received so far?
That is something that I would have to check, but I.
I can check right now and I'll report back, but it is live.
It's, it's over a hundred. It's sort of tapered off in the past couple of weeks with the holidays and everything, but we imagine with the open house. We're leaving it open for a week after the open house. We imagine that interest will tick up tomorrow. We'll have, at the open house, we'll have iPads where people can sit and take the survey. We'll also have little QR codes for anyone to scan it and take it. We have flyers. We have the social media posts. It's in Hannah's email signature.
My question is, in a typical comprehensive plan, what percent of your total population do you expect to respond to the survey?
We hope a lot more. We typically get, it's, it's about one to two percent is what we see across the board. It's, it's a very low. Even in big cities, you think, oh, we'll get thousands and thousands and thousands of responses, but it always comes out to about one, two percent. Kind of voter turnout sometimes.
My concern is that with that low of a participation rate, a small agitated group can really influence the result.
And that's the ones who take the time to fill out.
And this survey doesn't inform, is not the only thing that informs our recommendations in the plan. This is just kind of taking the temperature of the community, seeing what they're most interested in, what they're least interested in, those sorts of, those sorts of things.
We definitely take that into consideration that quality of life and parks would have been something we were looking at anyway, since we're doing a parks master plan. That could be a part of it too, is people are saying we're doing a parks master plan.
So you're pulling up.
Yeah, traditionally see a spike in those surveys after public engagement events like tomorrow night. So we have three more of those.
And there's also two additional surveys that are occurring as part of this plan process. So we, we learn a little bit of information from the beginning. We understand how to go back to the public second and third time, dig a little bit deeper, find out maybe why so many were dissatisfied. We're, we're kind of early in that process.
But we do ask that y'all too, as champions of the plan, help get that out to your circles. Almost asking me to authenticate myself like 10 times before I see how many numbers, how many people taking it. After y'all send that out to your circles, groups, you know, or if, you know, you have a business, we have a QR code. We can, we could put out the QR code. You can put it up in your business. There's a lot of ways we could.
On a future survey, I see you've got traffic enforcement is one of the issues that you're asking about. But I think asking a question about enforcement overall, including code enforcement, might be a valuable thing to ask. It's kind of related to some of the quality of life complaints we're hearing, and it's also related to some of the housing complaints we're here. So I think a whole thing around code would be good.
We've had about a hundred and ninety four, sorry, a hundred and ninety four people have taken the survey so far.
Who was on the committee that you've been talking about?
The committee, I believe it was chosen by.
The advisory committee.
So two members of city council, two members of P and Z, chamber, EDC, CBB, parks.
Yes.
Amanda Stevens is on, yes. On the school districts, yes.
So like Jordan said, we have two more surveys as well as three more open houses. So this is just the beginning of getting community data. This is not by any means driving anything at this point. It's just kind of giving us more information about what residents would like us to prioritize and focus on. So with that, we're going to go into goals a little bit. I'm going to try to keep this brief in the interest of time and in the interest that your previous comprehensive plan has forty four goals. We're not going to touch on each of the goals. We're, I'm going to give you sort of the sentiment that seemed to be captured in the previous plan. We're going over the comprehensive plan, the parks, the previous parks master plan and the 2018 visioning report, the path forward, past the future, past the future. And so it's just going to be kind of, here's where the city seems to be at that point. Here's sort of the focus that the plan seemed to be kind of honed in on. And then at the end, I'm going to ask you sort of based on your experience in the city today, sentiments, feelings, what are you proud of, what do you want to carry forward? So like I said, the previous comprehensive plan was adopted in 2006. There was an update, but that was more design focused. And so we're kind of going to gloss over that. Not that it's not important, but it just wasn't as tied to this comprehensive plan update, since this is more of a comprehensive update. Nine focus areas listed on the board and within those focus areas, there were forty four goals.
Are those in any particular order?
No, they're not in any particular order.
They're grouped by category.
These were the focus areas. They might have been the order listed in the plan.
How would you assess the number of goals?
It kind of seems like we, we tend to do, well, we, there's different ways we do it. We do sort of a goal statement and then strategies and actions. The forty four seemed kind of like strategies. There had been, a goal would have been something.
You could have rolled the goals up.
Yes, they were more action item. Yes. So like a goal for housing, if I were to take those, those goals associated with housing and roll it into, for those, those were strategies, roll it into a goal. I would have said something along the lines of focus, something focused on the character and quality of life improvements. They talked about affordability. They talked about many other things, but kind of the sentiment of that section seemed to focus mostly on this. And this is just from my, my reading. This might not be totally comprehensive. Economic development as well seemed very focused on agriculture and tourism. This was 2006. Also very focused on retaining and training local workforce and growing local businesses. The community character and design section seemed to focus on preserving heritage and culture, talking about the CBD as a focal point. And talked about gateways indicating arrival in the Fredericksburg, which was then addressed in the, the follow up update. Natural resources was focused on the natural resources of the hill country and preserving the natural beauty that's found here. Sustainability focused on non-renewable resources, making those available to residents and also a focus on green design. Land use, one of the longer sections, one of the harder ones to condense into a sentiment that we can easily digest in this meeting. But focused on orderly development patterns, providing adequate services, preserving historic character. And it had these not special focus areas, but a goal dedicated to each of these areas of the CBD, the airport, healthcare, university, and then residential neighborhoods. And feel free at any point to stop me if you have questions or so on. Growth section focused on growth that maintains the existing character, not growing for growth sake, but growing where it makes sense. Transportation focused on multimodal choices, pedestrian connectivity, as well as aviation facilities supporting the population and further development. Parks and recreation, the goals from the twenty six, 2006 comprehensive plan and the 2016 separate parks master plan were pretty similar. Both of them talked about a comprehensive trail system. Both talked about ensuring the park system meets the needs of the community and it's equitably distributed across the city. Orderly replacement of aging facilities and maintenance and cooperating with school districts and other entities that are involved in parks. And with that, that is my very brief, very digested synthesis of the 2006 comprehensive plan. Just to give you guys an idea of sort of what the goals and sentiments were from the city in 2006 as we look at the next five to 10 to 15 years. The visioning report was another document that was done in 2018, very lengthy process. I think it was 20 months or some sort of length of time. An enormous amount of work went into it. Again.
Involved thousands of people too.
Yeah, a very comprehensive process. It is also very hard to digest into something easy that we can talk about at this meeting.
There was a lot of people.
We've heard a lot about it at various meetings. It's something that's on Fredericksburg's mind. It's something that people want, seem to want to carry forward. So we want to check that sentiment and see sort of, with all of these, we're trying to see what is, what is, what we need to carry forward. If everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. So what are the priorities moving forward? What's this, what's really, if we could pick maybe five things that are really important for Fredericksburg moving forward. So that's why I was sort of talking about what was important in the past. Maybe some of those, many of those things likely will carry on into the future.
And specifically with the vision report, that can still carry forward and have momentum because that was looking from city government as a whole strategic plan.
Actually, let me make a correction. That was supposed to be a community wide vision as a whole. Government was supposed to be just one element in terms of supporting it. It was not visioning for the government. It was visioning for the community.
Yes, yes, but sorry, I, I, I'm going to say all aspects of the community, whereas our cop plan really focuses on land use and development. So not everything from the vision plan will be applicable to the cop plan process. So there will still be things like, you know, the, you know, this talks a lot about childcare and workforce. We can't solve that in the cop plan. We hope that still carries on, but what can we do in the cop plan to push that along though?
So as we said, this is just sort of a synthesis of the document. We pulled out the, the key visions and major recommendations from the report. I won't go over them in length, mostly because this was more recently done. I would imagine many of you were here or involved or have heard of this document. It was done in 2018. But the document touches on a lot of key aspects of the community. Ensuring that there's childcare for people, diversifying the economy, addressing domestic issues and drug violence and alcohol addiction, mental health services. Education, workforce development again, which was really important in the 2006 comprehensive plan. Hospital again, housing came up. A lot of issues we're seeing sort of repeat and we're hearing these in the public engagement as well. So this is good because we're getting sort of a refined clear vision of Fredericksburg. And most people seem to be sort of on the same page. Obviously, housing incredibly important, workforce housing, making sure that it's affordable to people who work in the community. Market Square and Main Street infrastructure. We can make this available to everybody and I'm sure many of you have access to the the 2018 vision report as well, the full document and the executive summary. Recommendations for tourism and wineries, which weren't, as mentioned in the 2006 plan, have come up, become more of a thing and will continue to be a key part of Fredericksburg in the future. And so as we look over these previous documents and we see where the city was, I want you to think about your experience in Fredericksburg. However, many years you've been here as a resident or involved in city government or business owner or family. All of that. Think about something, one, we're going to go one by one and we'll go counterclockwise since it's, it's good to do both for luck. One thing that you're proud of, something the city has pursued, not everything's, goals aren't always achieved and checked off and done forever, but what's something you feel the city has made great strides towards achieving that maybe will carry on on its own and to the need as much focus. And then one issue that you think needs additional focus in the future, if you could prioritize something. Like I said, if everything is a priority, the one priority. So we really want to hone in. Knowing what you know, get your insight as residents and also elected officials. How should we move forward? What's important for the future? So we'll start with Mary.
Pursued by the city, you're talking about the city of Fredericksburg, the government agency.
We struggled toward this really just something that you feel that is you're proud of the city. This, this was something that was brought to attention and was addressed.
Something you feel was complete since these last planning efforts and then something that wasn't complete that needs to be this far.
I'm going to defer on that one because I don't know, I don't know what a successful pursuit by the city from the comprehensive plan process that I'm proud of. I'm, I'm sure once you hear from the other people, we have that.
You can have checks by people.
You want to be last.
Well, yeah. More able to answer the second question.
We could, we could popcorn if we want.
I'm not trying to redesign your.
But it says one, one issue.
It's housing. Because that's, that goes right directly to everything, almost everything in the path to the future. And it has to do with, with topics that we're dealing with most of these days. It has to do with our inability to find people to work in the city. It has to do with everybody having a labor force issue that I hear. So if you're just saying, what is the one issue that if you fix, there would be huge celebration? And fix, I understand, whatever fix is. But that's it for me.
And what, I know there's lots of aspects, but what aspects specifically?
The affordability?
Yeah. Well, it's a supply and demand issue, right, which matters, which means the, the prices are crazy. And maybe diversity, I don't know, I'm not a developer, I'm, I'm open to all suggestions, I just know that that's what everybody talks about.
But the lack of housing that is affordable for all aspects of housing.
The lack of housing to support the life, the quality of life, every issue of quality of life that we talk about. And I'll defer on the first question, if somebody's gonna say it, I'm gonna go, that's it? I remember now. Okay.
I might be stretching it on the first one. The livability element in our housing and neighborhoods and what they look like. I'm, I'm always proud of what the city does to make our neighborhood, I mean, they're constantly picking up trash and sweeping the streets, and they're picking up brush, and they're picking there's always somebody out there trying to make the neighborhoods look nice for us and for the people coming around, I mean, and, and I've had people visiting, see that, say, oh my god, I can't believe all the work, I, I can't believe that, I can't believe your city is doing all that to keep your neighborhoods looking nice. And, and I'm extremely proud of what they do to keep the city looking nice. So that's part of it, about living, keeping our neighborhoods looking nice. And on the issue that needs to be carried forward, I agree. One that everybody's
I'm extremely proud of everybody's effort to develop and codify and put in place our empty corridor design standards. You drive into a lot of communities, and I travel around quite a bit. You think, driving in, you think, oh, this is gonna be a horrible experience, but we've really defined tuned hours. And we did a couple, a little bit later on a few projects, like some of those real flashy auto parts places, but the new standard going in place, Adam was very much for that. So I'm very proud of that, as far as, from the, as an action from our previous comp plan, because it was mentioned in previous comps, we finally achieved, we finally put it in place, and I think it's a fantastic document. I'm proud of the fact that I had input, I'm really glad I went through. Carrying this forward. Yeah, housing's an issue. But it's not just an issue exclusively for us, I guess it's an issue. And I, I'd like, on my wish list, I'd like for us to focus on some of the things we can fix. And just completely ignore the things you can't. And I, and I have a list of ten things we could do to probably free up twenty-five spaces right now.
What do you mean by spaces?
Places for people to live.
Oh, ah, I see.
And real some, it's just a matter of taking some forward to you.
I am proud of the work the city has done to invest in our water infrastructure.
That was mine.
Our leak detection survey, I know we're gonna be doing that again, but it was down to two percent, like that is incredible for a city, that is an older city. For your, some of your portable water lines?
I think that's a clear room.
Excited about that, and what that means for future growth, as well as anything that we have. And then carrying forward walkability parks that connect walking trails, so people aren't just walking on streets. Interconnectivity with trails and also sidewalks?
Sidewalks.
Yes.
I have nothing to say. Actually, to add to what Emily said on water infrastructure, what we've done to plan for the future, adding an additional water line coming from the, our, our well, wellfields. I think we've done a great job with all our infrastructure to support, I mean, we're not a town of twelve thousand people, we're a town of thirty-plus thousand people. And we've got the infrastructure to support that, and I think that's something we need to be proud of. Carry forward. I think we've done a terrible job with parks as far as planning new parks, as far as maintaining, keeping up with our current parks. We've seen a tremendous growth in young people in our community, and we have done nothing to, to address that, and a little bit disappointed in the two, two bonds we've tried to pass that failed, which tried to address that, and I, I just think that's I'm, I'm very disappointed that we haven't done a better job with taking care of our youth and, and our, our next generation in that aspect.
Do I get to go? I feel sorry for the people that go last.
I know. He's taking mine, keep going.
We could be quirky talents over here, all we have to say is ditto.
Yeah, that'll work.
Well, you gotta be original, so I'm a little bit biased, but I, I would say our public works infrastructure is something that we have made great gains on since the last comp plan. Not only water wastewater, but streets.
And electric. Think about the freeze and how well we went through the freeze.
We're making plans for changing direction, whether landfill, a little bit more environmentally friendly potentially. In terms of carrying forward, I do agree with housing, but I agree with body on the parks. I think parks, obviously, is, is something that we all have in mind to carry forward. We're doing that by engaging in a parks, parks master planning effort. I think a lot of work to do in that area, so I'd say parks.
As far as what we've done well, I think maintaining the historical character of our downtown, I think is key for me, I hear that a lot. A lot of my guests, a lot of time, they're coming here for that unique experience, and keeping it that way, and Anna's done a great job of that as well. Is that yours? Sorry.
Both points.
We'll just stop over this.
As far as what we can drop and do. I think housing definitely is a, is a challenge, I think more of everything from all kinds.
Yeah, never smacking your stock.
Everything you can think of.
I'm most proud of the fact that we've been able to maintain and continue to enhance our market square. The city is investing a lot of money to keep it dressed, to keep it nice, keep it clean, keep it fresh. And to add elements to it that have, that have never been done before. One of which may be a children's park in the middle of downtown, that all of our visitors can take their children to while they're here. One issue that I think that we need to carry forward and be mindful of is our transportation. Roads in and out of this community are as important as anything else that we're going to do. If they can't get here, they're not coming. And if they do get here, they want to be able to get around. We've got good streets, but we have to maintain our contact with people that text us to make sure that we get on their list and stay after them to do the things that we really need. And we've talked about a loop around Fredericksburg for forty-five years, and we ain't done it yet.
I was on that committee for eight years.
And I was on it in the seventies, thank you very much.
One of the successes, and we identified it in the twenty eighteen visioning, was the workforce development aspect of developing our local workforce. The part that came out of that conversation was to put together the Chamber of Commerce, the university system, and the school district. And luckily for us, the school district changed kind of their focus at the same time to emphasize more trades coming out, where our biggest issue coming in was that we were exporting our children and importing workers. And it was about, stop exporting our children. Give them opportunities to get on the ground and get jobs in the local community so they can stay here. So we don't have to now turn around and import newcomers, because our success rate that we found was, we were failing in importing newcomers, they stuck for maybe five, six months and then they left. Either it was a housing, or it was childcare, or it was cultural, there were a variety of factors why people weren't sticking here. So I was happy to see, coming out of that, this forging of a new relationship between those three entities to try to address providing kids to come up with the right type of education, the right focus areas to get them into the workforce and working as soon as possible. Instead of constantly thinking everybody has to go away for college. So that, to me, was a good success that got better after twenty eighteen, I know it was in two thousand and six, but it didn't really move until twenty eighteen. On the carry forward, yes, everybody's talked about housing, but when you talk about the workforce issue, childcare is the number two issue. And we have gone backwards on childcare, we have lost childcare slots. Our goal was to gain them, we were far behind the federal standard on the number of childcare slots that we needed in our community, given our population. And it's only gotten worse. And if people can't put the kids in childcare, they can't work. So we're losing workforce, even if they live here, they're not working here because they don't have an option for their children.
Childcare slots have disappeared while
Yeah.
child population has increased.
Has increased, yes.
The successes could be a combination there, I've listed, or one could look at it, we have provided a community that gives an opportunity for great economic vitality. Because we've provided a place that's great to live, great to bring your business. Whether or not they are a challenge in some respects, we do have an economically viable community that has allowed us all to move here and live here and do whatever, so even though it's possible faults with it. Where I'd like to see us carry forward could be under the infrastructure, but more on the digital side, as we move more and more to an economy based upon people not working in the zip code where they live. We need additional economic impact or additional love. Economic impact, the connectivity, so that those who work outside of the zip code where their home address is can have that opportunity, because in many cases, those jobs pay much better than what we're seeing here, people trying to make their living here in seven, eight, six, two, four.
I think on the successes, one of the things that was touched on in this plan was that everything we do in our city, whether it's a new project or an improvement to a project, we've had a goal, and I think we've carried through with this goal, that it's all first class. Everything that we do, we do at the highest standard. And I think that is very obvious in the quality of the city overall. And that's something we should be proud of. As a go-forward goal, something, it kind of along lines of what Daryl said, but my thought was that we do need to be exploring high-wage industry to, to bring in some industry that will increase our, the wages that we pay.
I think one of the, the great successes that Fredericksburg has had, not just in the last ten years, but probably, I've lived here almost fifty years, is that this is, Fredericksburg has always been a very forward-thinking community. It has been a, a center of business. Because when, when this was the, was the outpost before the Johnson administration calls rest of the country to discover Fredericksburg, this was the gateway to West Texas. Fredericksburg has always they have they have adopted, they, they, they've thought, okay, well, I'm gonna try this, they've never been, this community has never been resistant to change. We're gonna try, oh, it doesn't work, we're gonna try something else. I think that we, we see that now with, I think one of the successful pursuits that we have is the infrastructure, all levels of infrastructure, water, sewer, electric, streets. They are far superior to, to other communities our size, and you don't, you spend three days in Houston, Texas, you don't talk about infrastructure. They are, it's noticeable in our community that infrastructure is there. I think that the last, the, the actions by the, by the city council to increase the broadband connectivity is another, is another example of the forward-thinking aspect that this community is, because the world has changed in the last five years. Our, and it will continue to change with the, with the new, with the new generation coming, coming in here. What do we need to look forward? Well, of course, housing's an issue, I think we, we are, I think we have to be cognizant that our community is it is, it's a retired community. The average, the, the average income is, I think what's family income now, sixty-five thousand dollars, is that the, that's the, that's the norm? That puts pressure on being able to afford a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house. I think that one thing going forward is that we need to, we need to be open to different type other different types of housing, cluster housing, when, when we talk about affordable housing, we we identified that there's, there's housing in the missing middle that we are not, that we're not addressing. And I think we need to be thinking about, does, does that housing just need to go in certain areas, or is that housing that could go all over our community? I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that we have a, a north-south split in this community on Main Street.
Well, everybody's brought up, and it is, the infrastructure certainly is important. I want to remind people, and they forget quite often, about our sign yard next to it, it was way ahead, it was not that popular at the beginning. But go drive through San Marcos, Texas, see what you think of that sign. That was one of the infrastructures that I think still leaves everybody, and everybody seems to, to get along with it. And so I, I, the infrastructure, things forward, which really relies back to the loop. It's our transportation issues that we do have, traffic in town. It's not as bad as Houston or San Antonio yet, but, you know, there are, there are issues. What I'm worried about is the safety on Main Street because
Okay, the one, the one thing that I'm proud of is, of course, historic preservation, since that's my shtick. Anybody'd be surprised if I left that out, even though Jeff took it. I think that the city did such a good job finding a historic preserve, having a historic preservation officer positioned, and then finding such a good person to fill it, so I'm, I'm proud of what we've done there. The one issue that, I hate being so late, because the one I, I thought someone would steal this one as we went around, and I'm disappointed that no one did. We talk about how safe we are and what a great place this is to live, but it's not going to stay, say, if we don't support our police department, we have seven positions open that are budgeted for, and we can't find police officers to fill it. What do we need to do to do that? Do we need higher races to be in a place for them to live? Do we need better benefits? Whatever it is, if we want to keep the city safe, we've got to support the people that keep us safe. So that's, that's my issue. Now, I have one more success that wasn't brought up, so I'll bring it up. Our no chains on Main policy has been highly successful. Yes. Much to many landlords chagrin.
Property owners.
Property owners chagrin, however, people don't come here to go to Target. They don't come here to go to every chain possible that they could get in every other city, they come here for a unique destination experience, and so far, we've been good at supporting that. I would flip that with a carry forward. As in previous generations, we've had ebbs and flows of what is on Main Street, we had We had quilt shops, then we had antique and junk shops, then we went all home goods and now we're all
I'm just going to start over again from
Well. I'm not, I'm not sure if you, my only concern is I'm not sure if you get out from under the alcohol wave easily because no other type of business is going to be as competitive from a rent standpoint as an alcohol business.
Rent are so high downtown, that's kind of
So, so that, I'd be very interested to hear perspectives from y'all about rates, how do you, how do you cycle out of alcohol or rebalance after you've become heavy on the alcohol side, at least within the no chains on main district, it's becoming very heavy alcohol and I, as a non-alcohol business on Main Street, I have a concern about that. It's not that people are coming and puking in my store or anything, it's just the types of people that we are attracting to Main Street now has changed in the last decade that I've been there. And it's become noticeable and it's also become challenging for your staff to provide the quality client, a customer service that you want them to provide when people are being so rude and mean to them in the store. So we seem to be attracting a ruder, meaner, more entitled class of tourists.
I think that's the world.
And It may be endemic to everywhere. But as a store owner on Main Street, it is something that I've observed has shifted. I'd probably say post-pandemic, I think the pandemic maybe was a trigger point that caused it. But I can't help to think, even though I'm pro businesses ought to be able to do whatever they want. I can't help but think that the increased alcohol consumption of our tourism population may have something.
I think it's just divisions in our society nationwide.
It's, it's on my wishlist to institute some type of CUP or some kind of restrictions in the CBD for bars and alcohol. And I mean, there even, I even saw two of them come before historic this past week. Two and one.
Successes, I, I've got a long list. If I actually look at, you know, the goals, we've done a lot from the 2006. And I think what carries forward for me is that we are a city that's willing to write strong ordinances and have high standards. And I would agree, looking, I mean, historic preservation was a main component of this and we have followed through with design guidelines and expanding the historic district. And so my thing I'd like to carry forward would be that level of design guidelines and high quality in our subdivision ordinance. Because we talked about in this about connectivity, open space. But it's not addressed in subdivision ordinance and that's where it happens. That's where development happens, subdivision by subdivision. And so if that ordinance isn't strong, then the others aren't going to pick it up.
Okay, great.
Tom there.
You have to think of two original things.
I, I want to put this in, in, in very careful terms because I've worked with lots of, as Tim Dooley and Tom and I have worked with several staff blocks, et cetera. But I'm very pleased with our current staff. I am very pleased with the professional level and it's not a judgment of what's in the past, it's an observation of what's now. But the professional level that they provide, the quickness of response they provide to the council, at least to me. And the knowledge that they have based on their own abilities to do their own research and find out the answers. And it's really nice to have that kind of quick response team because Tim, how, and Tom, I got to tell you how much more work this is than it was 16 years ago. And it's almost, well, if I weren't retired, I would be even less effective than I am. And it's just, it just takes a lot of time to get to know the issues enough to make these kinds of decisions. We're getting thrown these changes really, really fast. And, and one of the problems with the SDR thing is that we weren't out in front of it fast enough because it caught us. And
Who would have known? Who would have known?
Who would have known? And yeah, so unintended consequences, all sorts of things. So I just want to brag on the people who who were the city of Fredericksburg up and down the line, who really support us. So that's something that fits into that excellence category that you're talking about Cindy. So, yeah, that'd be my number one answer. And I, what I would like to see is, I, I'll change my answer from housing to another two.
They took the big sign out to the fairgrounds last night.
So we have to go out there to get our videos?
At least you can think about it when you go to the
All right, thank you. This all, very good and you know, it, it's good that we take time to even think about the past during these because it's, it's cool that, because when y'all are bringing these things up, a lot of y'all were here to remember that. So when we're moving into this next discussion and you're thinking about something that you're like, oh, that sounds big, I'm not going to say that. Say it because in, you know, 10, 15 years, when they're updating this plan again, hopefully what we're talking about today is on that success column. So just use some of these examples to think, okay, that, you know, that sign ordinance, that might have seemed like a huge deal back then, but look at the impact it's had. So just keep those things
So we have one quick little fun exercise that we like to do with sort of all of our community engagement where possible. Is make nice little word clouds. We love to ask just one word or one phrase, what do you love about Fredericksburg?
And you can just You said a success, but it can't be the success because we're talking about the community as a whole. Just when you think of Fredericksburg, you were out and you were traveling and you were trying to convey Fredericksburg to somebody.
I'll start with that. I think it's, one thing I love about Fredericksburg is its sense of community.
Friendly.
Welcoming.
You want me to write this in? Yeah. German heritage.
Yes, the heritage, ground of keeping it alive.
Welcoming, friendly, community.
Beautiful.
Safe, beautiful.
I heard safety from the crowd.
Unique, German heritage. Please.
Quiet.
Dark skies.
Two words.
Again.
I would add
No rule followers.
This is not a sleepy little town, this is a dynamic little town.
Prosperous.
Great place to raise kids. I can't put that
How many words was that?
But it was a great
Fun, beautiful, clean, quiet, dark skies, prosperous. Community, friendly, welcoming. I think it was German heritage. Safe. Faith community.
And churches.
Community.
And I'd add one more, it's small and that's a good thing.
Yep.
Quaint.
Yeah.
But not small, but it, right, but it's, it's small.
Forward. Paul.
That's a good one. So now we're going to go into the, the sort of meat of the discussion and this is where we want your wish list. This is where you can tell us everything. We're going to go through these four. Each one of these topics, we're going to take everyone's notes. We're going to ask, what do you think are the strengths of Fredericksburg? What are things that we can build on? What are things we want to preserve? We're going to ask, what are the opportunities for the future of Fredericksburg? What's something you want to achieve? This is a good place for wish list stuff. Aspirations. Opportunities are things that are here that we could build on.
Yeah, Kyle, you've probably done it for SWAT, so it's like, try, this is, and you look at the slide again, I think there's Oh, I don't, I don't have explainer. So sore comes out of trying to be a little more positive. So we can sit here all day and list challenges and weaknesses. So if you think of a challenge or weakness, when we get to opportunities, how can you spin that challenge or weakness into an opportunity? So a lot of these will tie back to what we talked about with the carry forward, but this is where we can go just a little step further. We may have talked about housing or affordability or childcare, these different things that we can take, we can get a little more detailed here in the soar with some of these questions, some of the answers to these questions. So we'll start with strengths.
Public involvement.
Right, yeah. I was going to say, I will say, before I write that, we pass achievements, we actually answered that with the, we don't, we can just focus on the unique part, what we can build on, instead of, no, we're on the last bullet.
Yeah, and one that we didn't mention so much before, maybe a tad, was the whole volunteerism aspect of this community. Nobody really quite understands the power of the number of volunteer organizations that we have at our fingertips. And I think it's an opportunity for us to leverage that further. I don't think we take as much advantage of that in terms of engagement in the big issues of our community as maybe we should. So I think we could, we could leverage that further because it's a great asset to this community.
And tying onto that, it's also what the highest per capita millionaires, so we do have some investment financially.
Generosity.
Yeah, that's a nice word.
From the man who brought us lunch today.
But in terms of that, we also probably have some of the highest collective IQ in this community. We have a ton of people who are retired here who have fabulous resumes and great skill sets. And I would even encourage the city government to tap into those people as volunteers to help with issues that maybe the city staff isn't equipped to handle or we don't have adequate city staff resources to do to leverage those skillset volunteers to help close gaps.
And by capacity, she's talking about time.
Right. Leveraging them to accelerate traction on certain things that if we, if we do it at a normal pace, we won't get it done.
I can attest to that with a task force. Really, really smart people inputting into that and bringing experience from other places.
Like all four that's going together really well, I like that. And I can kind of even go, go into a lot of our, things like this can go into a lot of our recommendations as we get specific ones. This could be, this can be a general thing to build on.
Tenacity is probably one of our unique assets, I hope.
What is it?
Tenacity.
Tenacity.
Because we grab a hold of something and we really don't want to let go. That's right. I didn't want to say that.
Everybody talked a lot about strengths in the first round.
From a physical development perspective, Fredericksburg, these are great, kind of non-tangibles. From a little more tangible perspective, what can we, what can we build on?
We're not landlocked, we can grow.
Actually, their geographical location is a strength.
Being far enough away and we're a little bit hamstrung with this state not allowing us to annex more, but control and manage that annexation, it can be guarded.
Well, we're not going to become a dead
That's what comfort said too.
The other thing is that, that we're unique in the state of Texas with the three major highways, north, south, east and west, running right down the middle of the nation.
That's a double edged sword.
Some people work really hard.
I, I wasn't one of them.
Were you invited to one of them, Sharon?
Yes, but I wasn't one of them.
One other thing that has not been brought up yet is our agriculture. It's a key strength and I'm afraid that if we're not paying attention to it, we're going to lose it by default.
I would agree more with your second part of this, than your first, while it is still there, the economics of it. As someone who's actively engaged in, in production agriculture, hard changing.
And that's outside of the umbrella of viticulture, right? I've heard, I've heard the wine lived in with agriculture.
Daryl, is that one of the threats or the challenges?
I'd say it's probably more one of the threats here. When we started looking down and it's a simple matter of economics.
Over the United States, I would say, that's what we need probably.
Let me ask you a reality question. How much does it impact our total
Is there anything?
Those domestic product.
It's the basis for it. If you go look at the whole chart of the different industries that we have, over 45% of them are dependent on agriculture.
At least that's what we came up with.
In 2018, when we looked at it. I mean, I'll be interested to see what the economist says today, but I have the stats from 2018.
Now, the other part of that, what Daryl brings up, is that that might be something which we have no control over.
Correct.
Because that has to do, you know, we've got all these people that are moving into a semi-arid desert climate, which is the Texas oil country, and everybody wants to live here and everybody who wants to live here wants water, which is a, no, I'm serious. It's a, it's a scarce resource. It's a, it's a finite resource and you can, you can raise cattle more cheaply someplace else because they actually have grass when it actually does rain.
I think we're sort of transitioning to opportunities.
Is there anything else with strengths that anyone wanted to say before we move on?
We have a pretty phenomenal workforce, considering what we do, but who we have. And again, I look at our gross domestic product for Westview County. It's probably considerably higher than any surrounding county with the same amount of FTE, full-time employees.
I think our medical community makes us unique as well. We have a hospital that's not tax-based. And we have a charitable clinic that supports the gap in those people that can pay and cannot pay for healthcare and for a community this size. Those two entities work so well together.
We look at the social health. I mean, you've got, you look at the needs council, you've got the, the Good Sam Center, you've got the Gray Center that's going to come online by March of this year. You know, there's lots of people, this is a very, this is a very giving, a very helping community. And I think that's one of the major, that's a backbone, I think, of this community. We, we, we think about people who live here and try to help them.
I just said economy. I mean, we've got a healthy economy and
It's a good basis to start with. A lot, there's a lot of cities that have these on their aspirations list, yeah. A good, good, good place to start. Now, if I go to the next slide, we think of those, those O's, opportunity, what are our stakeholders asking for? And so you don't have to answer it in these three specific questions, this is just to get you thinking. So, you know, what's a challenge that can be turned into opportunity? What are those things we can do to set ourselves apart that are opportunities or more on the day-to-day administration side? What are those frequent complaints? And then how can we turn that into an opportunity? Something's being complained about a lot, maybe, maybe it's not an opportunity, maybe it's just a complaint we can't control, but is there something we can leverage there? So.
So from a business development standpoint, and this was brought up in 20, the visioning in 2018. The, and the reason I brought up agriculture. We, we now are known as the wine center in the state. But really, I think to temper that, we need to become the culinary center for the state and harvest things where we're leveraging the agricultural products that we do have along with the wine that we do produce and turn it into something more comprehensive so it's not so wholly alcohol-focused. It's the whole experience of food. It's, it's that. It's a culinary experience, not just an alcohol experience. And we've got the elements to do it, we just haven't been able to get it off the ground. And I think that's more of a business development issue where it needs attention.
Because there's a culinary center with the university where there's talks about that or
It's been ongoing for a long time. Flavery, Texas, Bobby and I are on that board.
Yeah.
And yes, that's, our location is at the university center. Yes, but it's, it's more comprehensive than just having that center. It's having a business development focus on culinary, not just on alcohol.
I think we have a real opportunity now regarding what Paul was saying with our tourist base. I, I love seeing sales tax and hot tax continue to trend up because it solves a lot of problems for us, but it also creates some. But the, to your comment about the nature or the character of the tourism base, and I don't face this because I'm never downtown in the weekends and I don't have a business. But I think we, one of our opportunities is to expand the desire to visit But I think we, one of our opportunities is to expand the desire to visit Fredericksburg for what Fredericksburg has always been. And it involves the heritage. And, and when I moved here twenty-seven years ago, that was the case. It was come to Fredericksburg and experience a bit of a lifestyle change. And, and I don't bemoan what, all the changes because I think it's benefited a lot of people, including broader community of the city. But I'd like to see that, I think we have an opportunity now to focus more on our nationally accredited museums and other historic parts of the, of the city that, that tell a tourist, this is what made us who we are. And I know that's kind of vague and, and squishy, but I think we could come up with some good ways to do that and to make that a big CBB, um, impetus.
I kind of catchphrase.
Specific.
Specific. That catchphrase that we are more than wine.
Yeah.
And, and yeah.
Now, I'll remind all of us in this room because we've all been here and that's why we're here. The reason that we are the way we are is because we don't necessarily want to change. If, if what you just said, Mayor, is true, and people are going to come here and want to come here, then we cannot, things like the sign ordinance and the entry corridors and all that other stuff, we got to stick to that philosophy and not bend the rules for the vendors when they come in and stick by what we know is best and works for us.
And you know, one thing was, uh, I look back over the last fifteen years and when the city's handing out bed tax to different groups. Uh, you know, one of the things I always thought of is that, um, there, it's, it's good for the city to do that because when people come here, when they get here, they need something to do, whether it's going to the theater or going to a, you know, going to a museum or going to, going to a concert or something. That's been one, one thing we've been blessed with having good, uh, good revenues to be able to do that. Um, and to broaden the appeal of, oh, I can go to Fredericksburg and I can shop, or I can go and I can go to museums, or I can go and do this. It's not just, it, it, it's not just wine. I mean, I've been here since the time Jim Hatchett, Rodden'sville started, you know, they were experimenting with wine and uh, Bell and, uh, Bob Oberhummans was the only venue here. And look where we are a couple of years later.
How do you upgrade your, how, how do you get a higher quality of tourists in the town? I, I mean, I'm right there with Polly. And if you, you know, when you, we all travel a lot here on, you know, various communities across the United States. And something that strikes me often is that walking down Main Street now is not like it was twenty years ago when I moved here. And it's, it's have to be delicate when you talk about this, but you can be in other communities that are more reminiscent of the type of tourists we used to have.
Matrix from Dallas.
Brady's going to fix all that sin.
Well, I think Brady and them.
There you go. I'll worry no more.
Most of those people are more educated now that are coming to the town. And that's been brought out with the, that they are more educated. We're Mr. Looking for the.
This has changed everything.
Well, the tourist expectations are definitely higher.
So you brought the phone. I can't remember if it was this community or another one or who said, it could have been someone in terms of, I'm taking your statement. You have the credit. But that was so true of you, uh, I think, I think, I actually think of this focus group, they were talking about the bachelor parties that come and things like that and how, how you can't really deter from that sometimes because if they see the, if someone sees the cool picture on the square on Instagram, they're like, wow, I really want that picture too. I like that. I like that look. I like that vibe. It's like, it's just, it's, it's marketing itself without having to pay for it. It's just, it's continually marketing itself on social media. And that's what, so it's like, how, how do we mitigate that? Because we can't change that, that every time someone posts a picture.
How do we adapt to that change? Because, because the cell phone has changed everything.
So I'm going to put social media and we'll figure out. That could be it.
One of the challenges we are seeing from a nationwide tourism marketing perspective when dealing with stewardship and sustainable destinations is that your clientele, AKA your tourists, who are able to spend your five and six hundred dollars, not on your short-term rentals, your two hundred dollars for a meal, et cetera, come with a sense of entitlement. So there is a fine line that you must walk between bringing those who can afford the type of destination you've become to those who have a different core value and maybe not have as deep pockets.
Our children.
So which group feels more entitled?
The ones that have the deeper pockets, for lack of a better term, Mayor, your Karens.
Is that what we snobbly call a better class?
Well, of course, you can define it however you want to. We can put socioeconomic indicators on it to give it a definition. Sorry, sorry. Somebody's willing to pay eight hundred to a thousand dollars a night for a short-term rental. They have expectations and they're not afraid to share those expectations with anybody they run into.
And they're not afraid to let you know the moment.
We have the capacity to meet those expectations.
I'll tell you what, ideally, the ideal tourist was everybody we had here in December. Came with their families, spent some money, went down to Market Pots, which Jordan and I are unbelievably fond of. If we could get those people twelve months out of the year, we'd all be fine. But I will tell you this, they weren't necessarily the ones spending the most money. Because most everybody on Main Street, and I'm there every day, in December was down. So that may not be a, that may be the one we want, but that may not be the ones we need. Cause I don't know about the rest of you folks, but.
I want families.
Want families.
I was going to say, it sounds like it might need to add families to the opportunity list.
They're cheap.
They're cheap, but they don't necessarily have the disposable.
They're raising children.
Their kids will come back.
Their kids will come back. I mean, it's, you know, the reality is.
So that may be an opportunity is that we, we, uh, focus on that twelve, twelve months a year, but we have to make it up some other way.
But wait, there's one other challenge. In December, we had plenty of things for kids to do. Usually, the other eleven months, we don't.
We heard in a lot of our focus groups that basically in the eleven months, there's not a lot for families and sometimes families might not be a welcome because of what do you do with a kid when you bring him down here?
Someone said that Fredericksburg used to be a, did they say it was a couples retreat? And now it's become sort of couples and also bachelor parties and those, and families have just sort of been left out.
Maybe you just need to let them know where the parks are. I took my grandkids to the elementary school playground and there's nobody there.
Some parks there is nobody there.
Nobody at parks at the schools.
When I'm thinking about opportunities, I'm thinking about this, this is very city centric, but our city-owned properties and using that to our advantage. If we need to move some people around or we need to, you know, if we need to expand the, you know, have a gigantic, amazing recycling center on Friendship or wherever, you know, I think using that, those resources, at first I was scared because there's not very many and it's kind of all throughout, but well, I mean, there's something, the ten acres we own on Friendship. Amazing.
Frenchman Park?
Yes, and it's, it's there. It's an opportunity, you know, there's.
A good neighborhood park, which we will need and that's like.
Right, and our challenge of a very small recycling center footprint, but maybe we should shift that somewhere else, sell it. I mean, there.
Leveraged city property.
All right, well, we feel this is covered.
So get out, get out your lists, though, for aspiration. So what do we, what do we care deeply about? And that question can be seen as, tell us what's your biggest, craziest ideas for Fredericksburg, or what the number one thing you want to get out of the plan is. Let's hear some of those very actionable, big ideas. You said, your culinary one was, that was an opportunity, but that also could go on this list too.
I'm not, I'm not going to meet your request with this statement, but I'm interested to see, how do we retain our small-town character?
Oh, that, that's the million dollar question of planning.
Growth is not our problem. We have to beat it off with a stick. That's, that's why I'm saying we're kind of a unicorn because most cities are like, help us grow, help us grow, help us grow. And that's not where we're at.
How do we remain?
How do we manage, how do we manage our growth and retain this small-town character that all of us love so much and don't want to lose?
That everybody else loves it too.
But at the same time, with the housing affordability, you will have to grow. So it's how do you grow in a sustainable way and maintain that character?
But should that be the focus of where our growth should be? It's not on commercial growth. It might need to be mostly on residential growth, which doesn't have the same return on investment as commercial growth. So.
And they almost have to happen together.
But, but I'm like, are we willing to forego some commercial growth in order to gain the residential growth to maintain the character that we want?
Well, the problem with that is you can't force those, either one of those things.
Well, you can, you can set your rules up, support some boundaries around them to where you, you get more of what you want and less of what you don't.
It's easy to make things stay away.
Yeah.
It's personally impossible to bring things in.
Well, I'm saying, are we at the, I'm asking the question, are we at the point where the stay-away strategy is?
Strong enough?
Is strong enough that we're getting so much organic growth coming at us. I mean, developers are coming in all the time with all these ideas that it's almost like, is it our job at this point to say no to a bunch of these ideas in order to preserve our character? Because they're just coming at us like water.
And when you say preserve your character and maintain the small-town feel, what, what exactly do you mean? What, what's the, what do you want to preserve specifically? Is it the ability to walk places? Is it going to the store and knowing that there's?
Ten minutes to get from place. I mean, we complain about traffic, but we're talking about a ten-minute drive to be anywhere in town. I mean, come on. This isn't, this is not, I mean, this is a first-world problem if I've ever seen. You know, we can walk. Sometimes you choose not to.
This is about relationships. And I think that's something that is missing from the national world stage. But like, how do we cultivate being good neighbors with each other and looking out for people and being able to recognize people you see in the grocery store? I get comments all the time, like, I don't even know anyone in the grocery store anymore. That's one of the like tipping point things.
I think that's what's changed from when I grew up here to now is in, in the old days, you could go to the grocery store and you could pick out the few tourists you didn't know because you knew everybody else. And that has all changed.
Because a lot of people don't even go to HGV anymore because it's too damn crowded.
So, so the thing that Polly mentioned about us protecting what we have, the problem is, is fifty or sixty different elements.
Yeah.
It's not.
Yeah, that's why I said, it's not going to meet your request, but it's a, it's a big concern.
But the way we can address it.
And so what this document can do, we can talk about mixed-use corridors. A lot of those are in here. We just created the zoning, but we haven't used it. But that's how you're going to create neighborhoods. Because right now, what we're seeing on Friendship, it's a bunch of compartments, a lot of, well, and they're all spread out. And that's completely different from what we love about our neighborhoods around Main Street. And so we've got to figure out a way to kind of create those. I'm not saying make Friendship a Main Street, but, but kind of. You've got to have neighborhoods that feed into a place to go to, so you don't have to go all the way across town because then your commute will be twenty minutes.
Yeah, someone mentioned cluster development earlier.
And you're encouraging less developmental friendships.
Point that our subdivision rules look against us. I can tell you sitting on P and Z, our subdivision rules hurt us a lot. They are not designed to create the character of neighborhoods that we have historically had, nor the character of neighborhoods that we want. And they, they create strict mall neighborhoods is what they do. That's how our subdivision rules are set up.
And, and on my list is somehow or another, put a check and balance system on how many R1As we're going to allow because that's not the right subdivision for us.
The entire zoning public needs to be.
But, but we have been in the last, since I've been here, ten, twelve years ago, we've had a lot of emphasis on how we zone commercial. We have a lot of emphasis on commercial development. We have not had a lot of emphasis on the quality of residential development that we allow in the community. It's been much more generic and that's how we got parody jokes or friendship books or whatever the heck it's called, warehouse for houses.
And the, the issue, the issue there, and you know, we, we have an aspiration for more close-knit neighborhoods. But then, all this is working in tandem. I mean, we realized that the reason that we have an R1A zoning now is because of the cost of land. And our desire to, how can we create something that's more affordable? And so we, our, our response was, okay, well, we're going to reduce the size of the lot.
But the developers have used that against us.
Well, you bet. But let's also be realistic about how many, how many, we have a lot of R1A platted lots, but how many R1A subdivisions do we have? We don't have that many.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, but they haven't, they've been platted, but they're not, but they haven't been built. Okay, and there's got to be a reason why they haven't been built.
And so if you think, if you think ten years from now, and you, where, where do you want to see Fredericksburg ten, fifteen years from now? If you're imagining it to the big idea, the Bay of Porches, or a certain project you'd like to see happen? Are there words to describe it? Give me some things to realize. Are there words to describe where you want it, what you want it to be? Walking trail along Town Creek and Bear Creek.
Absolutely. The regional comp plan referred to our creeks and our hills and our.
So one thing we didn't put on the opportunity, which is glaring, glaring, is the new middle school campus and all the vacant land around that. And so that is a huge opportunity and maybe we aspire to have more traditional neighborhoods that feed into that neighborhood, that school, just like we have right now, right? That's what makes it feel so special is that kids can ride their bikes and walk and it's in the heart, right, or parents' school. And that's the other opportunity is the old middle school campus. So I think those are two huge opportunities.
Making schools in the neighborhoods.
So we've got raw land next to the new campus and we're developed around the other. But it will be vacant, well, somewhat open for redevelopment.
Last, there's something else that's up. Yeah, we're talking so much about the city of Fredericksburg, but I think we have a great opportunity to acknowledge to work with the Westview County, see what we can do, have them maximize the laws that they have to help with the developments that are showing up in the county and they're just awful. And we have the leadership there and hopefully maybe our leadership, work with theirs to try to. So we have this beautiful city that everybody is driving in from the county and people are just taking what they can't do here and going and doing it out of the county. Work with damage to maximize what they can do to prevent that from happening.
Allow that to be more restricted.
I saw your legislative, your legislators got up.
What's the city plan?
We don't. In the county, I think the only, the only play that we have, the only play that we have is influence with elected officials.
Is what?
Influence with the elected officials who make policy.
Subdivision authority of the ETJ.
And convincing, say, county officials that yes, there are actually state laws that allow you to increase your regulations.
I think we'll see some of that coming up. I think we just had a
Red election sign.
So what are some other big ideas? You're probably thinking something crazy, so just say it out loud. This is your wish list. This is your opportunity. Are you looking at your wish list on your phone?
Well, unfortunately, most of mine all fall into specific codes. So that's where I come from.
So we're going to put you on the code update committee.
How about a big fence?
Do you want me to write that down?
Because I guess if you took a poll, I bet you there'd be a few people that damn sure raise their hand in this room.
So.
Or is it pay to get in and they have to be out?
I, I'm, I am serious. I mean, for years it's been, I've moved to Fredericksburg and I don't want anybody else coming in.
Who would you want to keep out?
Well, I don't know. I don't want to go that much.
Well, if you build a big fence, you're keeping everybody out.
No, you didn't charge for them to come in.
Hold it. Chief Or.
Um, staff housing, staff subsidized housing.
Great aspiration.
Oh, horrible now. Housing for the workforce.
Well, no, we're talking city staff housing.
City staff gets off work and is able to enjoy the Fredericksburg, go home in Fredericksburg and not drive out of town.
This may not be a new idea, but something paraphrasing what Janice just brought into about engaging the county. One thing I think that would be helpful and that we have seen since the one seventy-fifth, Tony and others, is to find ways to reengage long-term county residents in the activities. If you pay attention, there is actually a bit of a split between people who have been here for.
No kidding.
You're absolutely spot on.
There's a split at this table of all.
And so finding a way that we could do that, which is that city doable, I don't know. But if we can find that, then that comes back to retaining our small-town character and everything else.
Through, throughout our original comp, or not the original comp plan, the discount plan, if there's references to. Through, throughout our original comp, or not the original comp plan, the discount plan, if there's references to city, county, city, county. Everyone I read over today was, they didn't do that. They didn't do that. No way to do that.
Well, the same is true in the vision document.
Same thing.
And it really needs to be community, not city, county.
Cause everyone, everyone doesn't see it as city, county. They see it as one big large.
Yeah.
That's a good way. We change, we change the terminology on it.
Yeah. Cause I mean, every city resident lives in the county.
That's right.
Yeah.
But they don't act like it. I mean, what do you have, three zip codes in the entire county, seven eight six two four, seven eight six seven one, and then I don't know what Harper is, and the vast majority are two fours.
I was gonna say on, um, off, like off, off system roads. So small connectors that would help residents not deal with some of the congestion that we face.
Cold bypasses, Emily.
Well, no, that's.
No, 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 no. I don't mean, I don't.
The trial loop. Secret tunnels.
It is truly called, called the path of least resistance.
Right.
Take a look at, take a look at Travis Street. Take a look at San Antonio Street, Creek Street.
But don't we, don't we have some of those connectors proposed? Aren't they in our, in our plan?
We haven't funded them though.
Oh. But they're part of our C I D.
I know this most recent municipal budget sidewalks got knocked down.
Now, I put a header over that, more mobility.
Yeah. And the second thing is.
I don't care what your mode is, I just wanna see more mobility.
And the second thing is that if anybody proposes a subdivision to us, any development or any building permit, we have to go back to, you have to put a sidewalk. Right. I don't care if it goes nowhere.
Well, you know.
I thought that was.
No.
I mean, I know.
What happened?
They're putting money in.
We haven't sometimes, unfortunately.
If we have, if we have sidewalks that are designated only for tourists, can we fund them with hot funds?
I don't know. There is a proposal, there is a, we've heard from Texas Municipal League that this legislative session has on its docket to consider some expanding hot money to take care of, to, to, um, fund walkways and trails, especially to other facilities. Yes. I wanna ask a question of those of you who've been around a long time, cause now that we're talking about city, county stuff, I'm, I think this is. What are we on, R? What's that?
Yeah, we'll go to R as the last one and then.
Okay. Yeah. So you have, have been on the council before and those of you have observed, the, the narrative is that your tax, your tax bill you give from G C A D is what, four or five entities? Okay. And the biggest one is not the city. In fact, it's what? It's small. But we get a lot of, and you know, we get a lot of involvement from, uh, from citizen groups who say that any portion of a penny raise is eliminating people. We had one in the council today who said that he had to go to an S T R from the L T R because of taxes. Is that right? S T R from an L T R because of his taxes and so forth. And, and I know that most people would say, we, we just, on, um, for most people, it's like a hundred and twenty bucks extra a, a year. And for those of us who measure things in relative terms, that's not huge, but for some it is. But we talk about all these great things we wanna do, but we get hammered every year for even the slightest increase in taxes. What do we do about that?
Just do it.
Cause you talk about, you said, account, the community is not afraid of change, except when it becomes to taxpayer dollars. And there's, there's this long tradition of just keeping it as low as possible. And, and we've had people fuss at us, we don't want one penny for parks. Uh, you don't need bandwidth. I mean, um, thank you. We don't need all that stuff. Come on, just keep it as low as possible. And when you say, well, you know, most of your money is going to the F I S D and so that's going to somewhere else. And the county and Water District and so forth. So that is a change that's hard. I mean, a lack of change is hard to overcome, right? Cause we talk all day about what we like to do, but when you start po, pitching these things to the community, whether it's housing initiative or anything, no, absolutely not. Well, especially when, what's the answer to that, Tim?
I think the answer is voter participation. Polly was talking about it a while ago with parks and you look at the first bar chart she showed us about the parks have all gone to hell. Well, I can tell you exactly what that is. That's the soccer bombs that have decided that two hundred and fifty votes is gonna get what they want. And it's gonna work. But that's what it takes. It doesn't matter. We get a one percent return on our, on our surveys, same thing. Nobody participates. Nobody participates. We work ourselves to death trying to solve these problems and then we go out for a half percent raise and it just go.
So one of the challenges is to figure out how to work that, how to raise that.
But I think one of the challenges, at least with taxes, okay? The city tax rate, we're the lowest, we're, we've got the, one of the lowest city tax rates in the entire state of Texas. And when you look at it, like in the, in the last, in the last budget thing, the going up one penny in the city of Fredericksburg, you know, you would have, you would have thought that this was the biggest economic calamity in the history of Texas, okay? That one penny raised a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, which doesn't even pay for a cop and uniform and a new car. So we have got to find some way to convince the public that when the city council says we are not reducing the tax rate, in fact, we have the ability to go up three and a half percent, which might get us back to the tax rate that we were a year ago, that this is, this is, this is why we need to go up to maintain what we have to be able to preserve.
Or for new initiatives. That's what we're talking about.
Right.
Talking about for, for new quality of life initiatives.
So segue into results, could we say that one of the things, if we're thinking ahead and we have a charge to go write this plan, we're always trying to think of the end in mind. If we know we're succeeding, if we have better public participation.
And communication.
And communication.
Okay.
Informed, informed. It's not just about voting though, it's about making informed decisions and not.
I think, I think it's more about getting the community more engaged at the beginning of those discussions and not waiting until you have your perfect solution with all of your energy and passion built behind it. And you get this big ta-da in front of the community and they throw up all over it and then you're upset. I think it's about getting, getting them engaged originally at the problem, def- define the problem. Get them to understand and spend more time on define what the real problem is and get them to understand what they can articulate. It's a problem. That does a lot to help start them down the path that they want it addressed.
So we're talking about a huge sea change though, right? And the way the community deals with its governmental entities. Because if you were to say, we're gonna have a down haul and we're gonna hammer out the parks issue and we know that blah, 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 who would show up?
But the soccer moms. Depending on when you have to.
But, but the first question is to even go broader and say across the community, is the park, is parks a problem for you? You may find seventy percent of our community, they don't care.
Well, anything.
So now you're only dealing with thirty percent. But now what are you gonna, how do you engage the seventy percent to give something up so that the thirty percent can have some?
Well, or get the thirty percent to participate. That's the important thing.
Or get the thirty percent to sell the seventy percent on why they need out.
Welcome to democracy.
Two things. One is also two, that bond that failed.
Yes.
That was a pretty grand plan.
The second one wasn't.
We've always been a community of fixing as we got to it. Let's make, let's put some money aside to do this next year. And think about how we've always run parks and electric and everything else. So maybe that's one approach. I mean, I voted for it. I don't care. To me, it was, it was pennies for what it brought to our community. But there's a whole lot of people that don't necessarily see it that way. And the second thing is, is that the community elected you guys to make decisions? So maybe you have to just kind of take the heat and make that decision.
I'm not worried about the heat. I really not. It's taken quite a heat. Um, it's just, um, I, I would, I will say that I've hesitated in this past budget session and others as well, to, to think, boy, we could, we could set up some major initiative that would really add to the quality of life. Like you go back to the quality of the decision for no signs. I mean, the sign ordinance and, and the quality, quality decision for no chains on main and so forth. Now we all look at that, it's like, boy, that was great. And that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. But pitching that is, do you see it mostly as a messaging issue? Or is it what we hear, people in this town just don't make that kind of money?
It's both.
Okay.
I think it's both.
Yeah.
I think right now, society's changed from the first time you were elected, the first time I was elected. I'm not, you know, I wonder what, what kind of community reaction we would have today if it was, if it was the city council in twenty twenty-three, thinking about instituting a no chains on main.
How about, I'm, I was thinking about, how about if we decided to let's build Mark Potts?
You know, I don't, I don't know that we would, that we could have gotten it.
Even because the resistance to government authority period?
Yeah, it's a change.
I do think Mark Potts wasn't just built with city money. There was a lot of.
Can you imagine tackling that?
But the communities always supported things that are, that's one of the problems with the soccer, that they came to, they want the city to pay for everything. So then there was resistance. Right. We've always, the community has always supported things that are shown to be supported by community, by voluntary contributions. And then if you put city money into that, there's not that much resistance because you know that there's support. Sorry.
Yeah, we have a grand plan. So I'm just saying.
Without, and I'm not in.
You're not in it. What else is? We were talking about this before lunch.
Oh.
I'm just.
Do it. Importance of community buy-in.
That's one of the great things about Fredericksburg is through its history, I ask how do big things get done? The community decides together to get it done. We don't wait on someone else to do it for us.
And I think that's part of it, is that the, the soccer field thing was not driven by volunteer groups who raised their own money and asked for city for matching funds to help them do something. It was a big fat bond issue. And I'm one who voted against it, mostly because I didn't think the financials on it were, were good. Because I'd already seen other cities do these complexes. I knew what their costs were and I thought our costs were too high comparative.
So it is engagement. And looking at this table, I think Emily's the youngest person, but that's who we're planning for. And you've got to engage the people that are raising our next generation. And they're hard to get, but they're on Instagram. We're on, I guess, still Facebook, but we've got to, we've got to get to them in a new way because what they wanna know is what's in it for me. And the new budgeting software should help, right? So you can say, okay, that five dollar tax increase is gonna get me by this, right? But you've got to show them.
Is there enough of them living in the city limits to move the needle? I'm just curious.
What'd you say?
What was the question? Is there enough of that generation, I don't know what y'all call it.
Demographic.
To move the needle? Cause I'm just curious. I don't know. It, it seems.
I think so.
I think the challenge is those people are so busy and I mean, I, one, I've got young kids as well. You're so busy with your kids' activities that you don't have time to go to meetings and, and this, that and the other.
Yeah, that's, if it's important. When my, when my folks were raising five children, they made the time to get it done. I'm sorry.
It's an individual prioritization thing that is lacking in my generation.
But, and I guess what you have to have at that stage of your life is you have to have the self-satisfaction of knowing that you are making a difference for the future of your children and the community. And you plan to be here and you hope your children will stay. And that's, that is not the way the world works today.
So, so my, here's just a random thought about for those who are agitating for something. How about you start bringing your own volunteers and your own voluntary money to the table? And then each of you take on the task to convince five more people who are not part of your agitation group to vote with. I think if people see that the agitating groups bring volunteer money and volunteer labor and volunteer resources to tackle the problem, I think the taxpayers are more willing to go with, we'll match you, we'll subsidize it, we'll loan you the money till you can pay it back. So then, like we did with the market plots renovation group, versus somebody who's coming in saying, I want all these goods and I want the other taxpayers to pay for. And I think that's what irritates a taxpayer like me is this community used to be, the volunteers did all of this and the city supported them. And now we got people walking in saying, hey, I want all these amenities and I want you to pay for it.
And they want the land. That's what it is.
I, there, there. Where's the skin in the game?
There, there, there are people, there are people, there are people who are concerned about the fact that the city as a government entity continue, continues to take land off, out of the tax base to help pay for some of these things. Like the soccer people wanted, wanted out of, out on sixteen because we happen to own the dirt. So we could throw the dirt in. Well, now what else do they want? I don't know, but point's the same. Then the people, the investors will say, don't take that land off of the tax roll. You're just gonna cause everybody else's taxes to go up.
That also goes to quality of life of the community.
I agree, but contrast that with Golden Field Park when, you know, these crazy ideas for redeveloping it and make it no longer a park. And then the volunteer organizations came in and they built the basketball, uh, deal and they built the skate park and they brought in the kids' playground. Volunteers did that.
Okay. Y'all still here?
Yes. Taking over there, Council, P and Z. So just, cause we're gonna be all the time. I, I know we have like five or four minutes, right? Sounds like y'all would be okay staying with us. One more, one more question though. I wanna go, I wanna do one more question on the R. Just, um, and just, you know, tell me your answer. If this hypothetically was the last time you see us again before we write your plan, and I know we're gonna bring this plan to you at the end of the year to adopt, P and Z will see it, council will see it. What do we need to know that will make this planning process, process successful in your minds as a council or P and Z member? If you had to give me one charge, last time you saw me.
You're talking about the new comp.
Yeah, the new comp.
Okay. Um, my, my quick answer is this, when I, I just read this yesterday, so I was reminded. It's about the third time I've read it since two thousand and six. And what I was struck by. Sorry?
Probably a record for most people, not for people who read the plan.
What I was struck by was there's a lot of wishful thinking without any, at, any, any lint line to anything meaningful. It was a lot of, we need to do this, we need to do that, we need to do this. It will be successful if, when people read it and say, oh, they've really thought about how to do this. And how soon.
Like next steps.
How do we get there?
I want a next step.
But is that, is that something the consultant can tell us? They can, they can.
They can make us do it.
Well, true, but they can bring what we've said we want. Then we need to put together a document to follow up.
But then finesse it, right?
How we do it.
How to tie it back to every decision we make throughout the year or revisit it. Yeah. So it was not just. Yeah, we can give you, we can take big fluffy goals, actions and give you meaningful objectives that you go through. It sounds kind of like we want to plan to have some teeth, some actionable items, something to grab and hold on.
Which, I've got a twenty-year one.
Okay, go for it.
Twenty years from now, what percent of our workforce lives in the county? In the city, within the county?
So you like, you like to be a higher workforce.
I'll be willing to bet it's gonna be the exact same amount.
Might be though.
Cause that exact same amount was like that ten years ago.
Cause, and we can even use our import export numbers instead. Now, you know, we, we've got a baseline of people that we export out of the country, out of the county for jobs and a baseline of people that we import into the county for jobs. How did that change over time?
It's a good metric. Any other things like that, whether it's about the physical document, metrics you wanna see, or even just the process itself?
I'd like to see an update to the available vacant lots in town. This, this report kept referencing five hundred, five hundred. I think we've absorbed them all. But I don't know if we can figure out a way to research that. Cause this report has referred to it several times in your documents.
Anyone else?
So before we let you go, we should touch on our next steps.
Before we do this, Miss, I do have a request for a comment. Eric, Eric, Eric Camus.
Thank you very much. Eric Camus lived in the city. Great presentation, fabulous discussion. I would commend to you that a successful strategy in order to be a tool for the city to use should not only have ends, but also you have ways and means. The ways that you have are enforcement ordinances, uh, incentives that you provide to people, a variety of things that can move you in a direction or keep you from going in another direction. And then the, the ways that you do that are actually specific things, checklist. For each one of your goals on there, you should have a list of metrics. You should have a matrix that says, we've accomplished this or we haven't. Otherwise, it sits on a shelf for sixteen years and nobody looks at it. It doesn't actually get you somewhere. It doesn't actually get you somewhere. There should be metrics that allow you to say, we've done this to this standard or we've changed it because truth is change. Interdependencies. Um, what things work, get text items, what are the things that we rely on in order to be able to do the things we want to do with our roads? Um, risk assessments. What happens to your plan for a culinary center? If Texas Tech says, we no longer need to have regional centers. Everybody can take classes online. I taught for Texas Tech here for five semesters and never had a single student closer than you value. It's all online. You're not going to have a master's at Texas Tech. So what happens to that for those, those sorts of independent interdependencies? And there's a thing called alternate futures analysis. How do you know if you're going in the right direction or if you're going in the wrong direction? These are planning strategies. We use instead of revenue, use the military. You know, how do you know that you're moving where you want to go and if things aren't grailing you, you're actually going in the wrong direction? Thanks very much.
So you're, okay.
Okay. I believe with that, we're done. We want to remind everybody, people who are here attending the meeting too, we have an open house tomorrow from four to seven at the Pioneer Museum in the Old Sanctuary, I believe. It's a come and go event. I think some remarks will be made at five, but come whenever you can. We'd love the entire community's input. More people are better. Like we said, surveys, we typically only get one to two percent of the community. So these public open houses are a way where we try to get more of the community. But across the board, across the nation, community engagement is hard. It's hard to get people out and get people involved.
And to take, take Ms. Polly's recommendation, everyone in this room, go tell five people about tomorrow's open house. We also have the online survey, it's surveymonkey slash F B plan twenty twenty three. There'll be Q R codes around two. And it's on the city website. You can also just directly go to the city website.
Yes, it's on the city website. Um, you'll see us again throughout this process. I think we have two or three more meetings with, with you guys. I think most of them will be separate.
Well, we have to, we might, we might have some separates, some separate rooms and then we'll be back together at the end.
Um, you'll see much more of us. And if you have any questions, you can.
No, I'm just going to say, I don't know, Anna Clinton, if, if council P and Z has thoughts throughout this process, they can things, run them through y'all and y'all will forward them to us. So feel free to, I know if you think of something later, you think of a big idea or and you're talking with people in the community or someone wants to know how to get involved, just direct them to staff and we're here to help. If y'all for a time, we're only a few minutes over, so I think good discussion.
Chair.
Thank y'all.
We adjourned. The planning and zoning commission meeting. Second.
That was your second. The jury, city council, all in favor, say aye.
Thank you all.